I can't see everybody. I think that Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Sandoval and me. And I know that Anya, oops, uh-oh. Okay, let me see. Okay, well.
I'm sorry, Chair, was there? I switched it to the participant view.
Oh, so you can still hear me then. I'm so sorry. I was thinking I had to go do something to resurrect my screen. So I won't do that. So we have, I think, four commissioners or so, and that is great. Just for everyone else's information, the newest commissioner, Commissioner Boyer, had planned to be here, but she also co-chairs OWEB, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, and it conflicted with this meeting and she needed to be there this afternoon. And then Stuart Warren will be here in an hour or so. Besides that, we should have everybody. Just really quick on ground rules, do ground rules, do's and don'ts. This is a work session solely focused on the climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking. As a work session, we are, it's a publicly notified meeting. People can listen in. We're recording it so people can listen and watch it later. But we are not going to be doing any kind of deliberating or providing guidance today. Really, this is an extra chance, additional chance for us to really understand these materials in anticipation of providing guidance to staff next week. I am, so we encourage clarifying questions, anything you need to know to understand the material, but obviously no guidance, although I did talk to staff this morning. And I think we'd like to, if you have like, if you want to make a list of information you think you might need for next week's commission meeting where we talk about this and can provide guidance, if you can think about what material you might need to have them present to help you formulate that guidance in your heads, it'd be wonderful if they could have that heads up today.
And Chair?
Yes.
Anya Lee, when I try to share my video, it says that the host has like prevented me from sharing it or something. So that's why you don't see me, guys.
Yeah, and I don't see anybody either. All I see is just, I don't see much. I don't see anybody anymore, but.
I see everybody, but.
If you go to the top of your screen, there should be a box which will allow you to maximize your screen.
Okay.
Or your screen, if that is what you're doing.
Yeah, I think it's maximize, but it just, it's weird. It's just.
And then you can also check view in the upper right corner.
Yeah, so my error says unable to start video. You can't start your video because the host has stopped it. It's the first time I've ever seen that.
Okay, we are having some technical issues, so I'm trying some things on the backend. One moment, please.
Yeah, and we can proceed. I just want to tell you why you can't see me.
Thank you. Sorry, Chair. I'm also here, but not able to join the video. But Esther, thank you for checking on that. That's Kirsten.
SGM wanted to make them co-hosts because I think everyone else is a co-host.
Thank you. It is Vice Chair Holova. Yes, let me continue working on this.
I might just go ahead and sign off and re-sign in, see if that helps at all. So you guys can start, though. I don't want to. So I'm going to sign out.
Are you seeing more now? I think I'm allowed. Is Vice Chair Holova allowed? Are you seeing more?
I'm not seeing anybody, so I'll go ahead and repl- I'll plug back in. Thanks. Oh, there you are. I pushed the X. And you're supposed to go away, but you appeared. Sorry about that. Thank you. Staff, take it away. Take me out of my misery.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair MacArthur, Vice Chair Holova, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Young. I'm a senior urban planner with the department. And along with Bill Holmstrom, we're the project managers for the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Effort. So we've got a pretty robust presentation for you today, and our team is here to answer questions. I think as you articulated, Chair MacArthur, our goal here is to really bring you up to speed on the current draft of the rules and get you in good shape for the meeting next week. So here's our agenda. We're going to try to move through this as quickly as possible. Also, you know, understand this is a little informal and we want to make sure that we have time to respond to any questions or comments that commissioners have. So feel free to raise your hand or whatever, if you'd like us to pause and we'll try and keep an eye out for that. So we'll begin with an overview and background on this effort, beginning with a look at the charge that was given to the Rulemaking Advisory Committee. This was back in September of 2020, if you can think back to that time. We've been hard at work since then on this effort. Go ahead and forward to the next slide, Bill. And so we've just excerpted a few things from the charge here. And desired outcomes, of course, is one of our primary goals here or primary focus. We had a number of things, have a number of things that were specified in the charge. So of course, taking action with a sense of urgency, lasting programmatic response, meeting Oregon's climate pollution emission reduction goals, reducing transportation costs, increasing housing choice and supply. I would say also increasing transportation choice and supply is a focus of what we're doing. Improving capacity building efforts for local governments, regional entities, community-based organizations and health providers to work together to reduce climate pollution, to make sure that our rules accommodate and address the needs of impacted communities, including communities of color, low-income households, tribal communities and other groups that have been traditionally underrepresented in the public process. Developing metrics that we can use to compare jurisdictions' equitable outcomes to see are we meeting our equity goals as well as our climate goals. And lastly, to develop a process by which local jurisdictions can define and create accountability around their community-specific metrics related to pollution and environmental impacts. So as we're kind of stepping through the rules today and in future meetings, maybe keep in the back of your mind, this was, these were the targets that we set for ourselves when we began this effort. Next slide, please. And specific to the rules themselves, a number of print rulemaking principles were articulated. So of course, the rules must be clear and understandable. The rules will mainly apply to local jurisdictions. The rules should shift the existing ways we do things rather than simply place new requirements on top of existing requirements. We've tried to do that to make some changes to how, for example, transportation planning is done in the metropolitan areas. Policy changes must be primarily aimed at jurisdictions within metropolitan areas. You'll see that the draft rules really almost entirely, I think, apply only within the identified eight metropolitan areas within the state. Also noting that requirements will differ between urban and rural areas. Our focus really here has been upon urban areas and because that is the most significant source of our climate pollution from the light-duty transportation sector. The rules should apply as quickly as is reasonable, and of course, the rules must be enforceable. Next slide, please. And these are the eight metropolitan regions. I know you've seen this graphic before, and I will just note that, of course, Portland Metro is a little bit different in where it stands in terms of meeting climate goals. As you know, the region has done scenario planning, adopted a preferred scenario and is well on its way to implementing that preferred scenario through the 2040 growth concept, through the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan and the Climate Smart Communities Program. There are some cases where our roles will sort of tie into the work that's already been done in the metro region. In the other areas, these rules will generally apply as we're kind of going over them today. Next slide, please. Of course, the rules are in two categories. The first is regional planning to meet pollution reduction targets. And Cody Meyer will be speaking later today about the most recent changes there and bringing, you know, one of the questions that we'll have for you at our meeting next week. Also, the second set of rules relates to updated land use and transportation plan. That'll be the bulk of the stuff we talk about tonight. Next slide, please. All right, let's talk about the process and schedule. So this effort, as you know, has been very robust. It began with a series of interviews, development of the rulemaking charge and charter, formation of 40-plus person advisory committee, including representation from many community-based organizations and representatives from all eight of the metropolitan areas. We've held a number of community conversations, both in the spring and the fall of 2021. We've held technical work group meetings, regional practitioner meetings, and hosted dozens of additional presentations, and we continue to do so and will continue to do so as we move forward. It's been a robust process, and we're very, very appreciative of the high level of engagement we've received from all of our rulemaking advisory committee members. Most recently, in December, we held 14 public meetings. It was quite a busy time. Six practitioner roundtables, and that focus of those meetings was really to look at implementation on the local government side. And so we sat down with practitioners from different regions and kind of talked through some of the issues or questions that they had about how the draft rules would be implemented. We also held eight topic-specific work group meetings. So these were focused on particular areas of rulemaking in kind of a subset of the entire Rulemaking Advisory Committee on topics like climate-friendly areas, parking reform, transportation system planning. Of course, as I've said, we've also had many additional presentations and meetings.
Kev, Kevin?
Yeah.
I just had a quick question. Could you, the practitioners versus the topic-specific, can you say what the difference between who is considered the practitioner versus who would be in a topic specific?
You bet. So the practitioner roundtables were really focused on engaging local government staff. So folks who would be implementing, to a large degree, these rules. So people from counties, cities, metropolitan planning organizations, in some cases, attended those to really get into the sort of nuts and bolts of implementation. The topic-specific work groups were also sort of diving into a more detailed analysis, but the membership of those groups was really defined by people from the RAC or folks with similar interests who wanted to be, who roll up their sleeves and be engaged on that topic. So we had advocacy folks, local government folks, we had community-based organization representatives and others engaged in those work groups.
Advocation, is that the same as the technical meetings? Or technical meetings were something different than these two things?
You know, that's a good question. I would define both of these as technical meetings if by technical you mean getting down into the weeds, because that was really the focus.
Chair MacArthur and Vice Chair Holova, Kevin?
Yeah.
May this Kirsten. So Kevin's putting a point on the 14 meetings they had just in the month of December. The technical work group meetings that you're referring to, Vice Chair Holova, were actually in the fall. And those were open to everyone, but they're also on topic-specific themes. Thank you. And there's additional information on that on page six of you guys' staff reports. If you want to be following along in print. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Make sure.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Next slide, then, please. All right, and so here's the path forward. We are a week prior to our February 3 meeting with you. We'll be reviewing draft rules. We'll be also sharing with you the impact statements that have been prepared associated with this rulemaking effort and discussing policy questions and looking for preliminary guidance from the Commission on a few key questions that we have. Once we have that conversation with you, staff will then roll into preparing the draft rules for review by Department of Justice, you know, addressing concerns we've heard from the last Rulemaking Advisory Committee meeting, from public testimony, as well as from the Commission at our meeting next week. We, our plan is to submit those draft rules for publication by the Secretary of State on March 1st. We need to meet that deadline in order to hold our first public hearing, either on March 31st or April 1st. And then we'll have our subsequent final public hearing, May 19th or 20th, and hopefully adoption of the rules. We certainly have time to, you know, make changes. This isn't, certainly, this isn't our last look at the rules. It's really kind of our first look at our complete set of rules, and we want to step through those with you today. But understand that staff will be making changes in response to your direction, preliminary direction you provide next week, as well as conceivably following the March hearing. Next slide, please. All right, I think I'm going to hand this over to Bill to talk about the divisions of rules.
Thank you, Kevin. Chair MacArthur, Commissioners, my name is Bill Holmstrom. I'm the Agency's Land Use and Transportation Planning Coordinator. And again, like Kevin said, along with him, one of the co-managers of the rulemaking project and happy to be with you here today. I'm just going to go over a couple pieces that really, we're going to start getting into kind of the nuts and bolts of what we're proposing with these draft rules so that I think you have an opportunity to be a little bit more conversant, especially if you have, see comments that might get into some of the details in the weeds and you're kind of understanding, okay, what are they talking about here? What's going on there? When you have staff talk about some of these pieces, and throughout this conversation, the rest of the day, we're going to kind of be talking about specific, what's in these rules? Where do those live? How are we actually making these things happen? So that's our goal for today. I'm going to start with talking about kind of the big picture in terms of the three divisions of rules that we're talking about. There are three, you know, the Commission has Chapter 660, and there's a whole, there's probably 40, 50 different rules that the Commission has, or divisions of rules that talk about, you know, everything from public involvement and farm and forest, UGBs, all sorts of stuff, right? We're touching three of those with this rulemaking. Division 8 is our housing rules. Just a few minor changes. Kevin will talk about those in detail later that change, makes some changes to help us implement our climate-friendly areas and roll that into how local governments in metropolitan areas do that as part of their housing planning. So that's what Division 8 changes are. Division 12 is the bulk of the changes that we're making. It's the transportation planning rules. Those are existing set of rules that tell local governments how to do coordinated land use and transportation planning, which is the heart of what we're talking about here. Really, the vast majority of the rules are new rules that talk about how local governments in those metropolitan areas are supposed to do things differently than they've been doing it before. And I'll talk in more detail later on about what is, what's changing, what's not changing, what, who does what, a little bit more later. And then we also have Division 44, which are metropolitan greenhouse gas reduction rules. I think the most important thing to remember is that's where our targets for the metropolitan areas for reducing greenhouse gases, that's where those live. And we are proposing some changes, and Cody will talk more about that later at this meeting about how metropolitan areas, particularly outside the Portland metropolitan area, will meet these targets. Previously, we've only required the Portland metropolitan area to actually meet the targets, and the other ones have been voluntary. We're making that change. So Cody will talk a little bit more about that later on today. But I wanted to start there because there are three different pieces here, and I just want to make sure that everyone's clear about that. All right, I can move my own slides forward. So in Division 12, there are, there are kind of a couple different things that were planned to do. We have existing rules, and they, right now, they go through 0 through 70. Some of them we are changing. Some, most of them we are not, to the extent possible. We are keeping everyone outside of metropolitan area the status quo, okay? We're not changing the rules for anyone outside the metropolitan areas. These rules apply to people, to local governments within Oregon's eight metropolitan areas. I just want to be real clear about that. When we first started this process, we weren't exactly sure where, how that line would shake out. You can see some of that in the charge that Kevin talked about at the beginning. I was kind of rereading that and I'm saying, well, we're kind of, we kind of talked about, maybe we would do some stuff outside of metropolitan areas. We've ended up making the decision, and it's actually been cleaner. That's really where we draw the line. So just to be real clear about that, if anyone's listening today, you know, because we do get questions from people out somewhere else saying either like, you guys are making all these rules and you haven't talked to us, and like, well, no, we're not making rules for you. You know, so it's, or like, why aren't you making rules for these people? Because that's not part of what we're talking about with this rulemaking. So I want to be real clear about that. Rules, and the rules, the changes that we're making to those rules are really mostly changes that have to do with how metropolitan areas do planning. Those are kind of scattered in those rules, and we're taking those out and we're putting those into new rules. We have two new rules, 11 and 12, which I'm going to talk about here in just a second. But I wanted to mention those separately because they're kind of embedded where those are numbered in with the rest of the rules. But the rest of the rules that are new are, start at 100, and then they go all the way up to 915 right now. Those are the new rules that are going to apply to local governments in the metropolitan areas and to metro. And just to be real clear, that's the bulk of the new stuff we're talking about live in those rules. In those, yeah, so that's again, kind of reconfirming that. So within those rules that have to, that are 100 and above, and we'll be talking a lot more about this later today, so, and you'll see this little diagram again. So don't worry about getting everything down, but we've kind of tried to break it up into logical chunks. Rules 100, and X goes up to through 215, are kind of general land use and transportation planning requirements, how local governments do transportation system planning. I'll cover kind of in more detail about that later today. Rules 300 through 360 have to do with land use planning specifically. In the context, I mean, this is a transportation planning rule, so it's really in the context of transportation. Kevin will talk a little bit more about that later today. Climate-friendly areas live in those rules. Our 400 series of rules, 400 through 450, have to do with parking. Evan will talk more later today about the details in our parking rules. 500 through 830, I'm calling our modal planning rules are really specific to the specific modes of transportation, our pedestrian, bicycle, public transportation, and streets and highways. I'll talk more about that later today. And then our final series is 900 through 915, monitoring or importing. Frankly, I'm not sure that we'll talk a lot about that today. We can try to answer some questions if folks have a little bit about that. Cody, I'm not sure if you've got some slides on that or not. We might have, we might, that might be a kind of a hole, but we've got plenty of other things to talk about, so, so don't worry. I'm going to move on now into kind of application of the rules and kind of where it lives that we're just talking about metropolitan areas, because I think this has been confusing to people. It's in, it's in Division 12. Our updated rules, like I said, are designed to only apply in Oregon's eight metropolitan areas, and we're not making changes outside metropolitan areas. That's our goal. That's what we've tried to do with the rules. And as much as possible, keep that very minimal. We have Rule 11, and when people ask, well, where does it say that it's just metropolitan areas? Because you start looking at the rules, starting in 100, it just says cities and counties. Well, you've got to go back to Rule 11. Rule 11 is the traffic cop. It says, this rule applies here, this rule applies there, this rule applies everywhere. There are some rules that continue to apply statewide. There are some rules that are existing rules that will just apply outside of metropolitan areas. And then there are the new rules that apply just within metropolitan areas. So, you know, if you're ever confused about particularly the existing rules, what's changed and what applies and why did it change this way? Go back to Rule 11. Rule 11 is the one that says, this is here, that's there. And it kind of makes sense of everything and how the rule's been split up, particularly the existing rules. I want to talk a little bit about timing and phasing, before we get into this too much. I just want to be clear, this is an area where I think we still have a little bit of work to do. And we will be talking with the Commission some more at your meeting next week about particular elements of how this works, but I want to talk about where we are right now. Yeah, let me get my right place here. So what we've tried to do is to make sure that these rules are durable, that they'll last into the future, that they're not just something that happens in the next couple of years. So as much as possible, we've tried to make the rules so that, you know, people 20 years from now that need to update their transportation system plan, it will make sense to them for how that works. But we know over the next few years, we're going to need to be able to transition from where we are now to that future, that new, that future, right, where we're trying to go. So that's what, what we've done in a couple different places in both Divisions 12 and 44. I'm going to talk a little bit about Division 12, and then Cody's going to have a slide on Division 44 before we move forward. In Division 12, it's Rule 12, Division 12 Rule 12, that talks about timing. It talks about effective dates of certain rules. It talks about what deadlines are for certain things. We also have provision, and this is relatively new piece of the draft rules that we brought to our advisory committee last week, as an optional work program to set alternative dates, deadlines or effective dates for local governments within the metropolitan areas to be able to accomplish their work in the next two years. And I'll talk about that here in the next slide. Oh, we started off kind of honestly, kind of throwing out dates for lots of different things. Say you do this this time, do this by this time. That sounds about right. And we heard a lot back from people like, how is this actually going to work on the ground? What order is this really supposed to happen? How are we going to be able to do this, then that? Or should the other way? I mean, that's one reason why we're adding the flexibility for the work program. But also, we've gone back and made sure that we're kind of connecting a lot of these requirements to transportation system plan updates. Because in a lot of places, that's kind of where it makes sense to do it and to kind of have standalone issues that need to be done kind of before a TSP update or in the middle of a TSP update before you've finished out exactly how that TSP is going to look at the end. It doesn't make a lot of sense. So you'll see that in a lot of those updated rules. Not everything, but a lot of them are now connected to the TSP updates. So we have an optional work program in Rule 12. And it's really in response to feedback we've heard, particularly from local governments, that, you know, hey, how are we actually going to make this work? Folks are in different places now with existing transportation system plans that are widely varying vintages. Some of them just updated last year. Some of them are 10-plus years old. So, you know, there's varying levels of work that need to be done, varying levels of quality. Other projects that are happening, we've got a big city right now that's doing a big comp plan update, and they're like moving this direction, but they're not doing things exactly the way how we played it out in the rules. So like, okay, we've got our own process going on. How is that going to fit in with this? They want to do a TSP update pretty soon. You know, there's things like that that we want to make sure that we're working with local governments on it. And Cody will talk a little bit more about how that also fits in with the regional planning requirements that we have. But we are, so we provided an opportunity for local governments to have a regional, regionally-coordinated work program that still meets a number of criteria, including, you know, we're not, we're saying you can't have a work program that says, yeah, we'll do that in 10 years. There still has to be urgency to that. We've set out some timelines on that, and we can talk about tweaking those. But right now, we've got interest in the next three years that we'd like everything to be completed. The work program includes making sure that a transportation system plan update is a part of that work program and that the work program would be approved by you, be approved by the Commission. They would be proposed by the local government. Staff would take a look at that and then bring that to the Commission. The Commission could look at that, make changes as necessary at the time you approve it in the future, kind of giving that flexibility to, for local governments as things happen to make sure that things. We're really trying to balance, make, making things doable with urgency, right? We want, we know the science tells us we need to do, move quickly and move fast. But, you know, with the resources that are available, with, you know, just the timing of things and the order of operations of certain things, we know we're not going to be able to do things instantly. So it's just a matter of figuring out how fast can we do it? And that's not something we're going to be able to figure out during this rulemaking process itself. I see a hand up from Kirsten.
Sorry. Thank you, Bill. I just wanted to clarify, if I could, that anyone else is trying to kind of get into the rules and follow along in your hard copies, Commissioners, I know that folks who might be listening don't have the benefit of a hard copy, but if you are, Bill's talking about these applicability and effective dates. We're actually in the new rule section, so it's in your appendix. That was from RAC meeting 11. It's on page 37. So thanks, Bill. That is all. I was looking earlier in item 8, but it's in the new rule section, which threw me a bit. I finally found it. Just wanted to share. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, it's New Rule 12. And if at any time, I did not put page numbers or anything in this presentation. Folks have a question about where those live, I've got a copy here and I can bring that up and tell you which page that's on, for sure. Commissioner MacArthur.
Thanks, Bill. I just wanted to clarify a clarifying question. So the work program, the rules don't require each of the M. So the work program, the rules don't require each of the MPOs, each of the MPOs to do a regionally coordinated work program as they're written. It allows for that to happen. Should those communities in an MPO area want to deviate from the timeframes listed in the rule? Or are they all required to do it? Or is it kind of a one way to accomplish the rules in a certain timeframe?
The former is correct. Yes, you're, you're correct. It's an option to. Instead of using the standard timeframes that are in the rule to do something different and it's an option, it's not required. This, again, this is something we're going to be talking about with you next week. See if that's how you want to structure it or not. And that's, you know, that makes sense to you and we're happy to have those discussions in more detail of course next week.
Thank you.
I'm going to hand it over to Cody now to talk a little bit about division 44 and how the work programs and timing is set up for that.
Thank you, Bill. Good afternoon, everyone. Cody Meyer, planner with the department. And so in division 44, talking about the regional plans and the requirements. We have ongoing work in metro. The climate smart communities is being implemented through their regional transportation plan or RTP. They're pulling up the next iteration of that right now. I'm expected to be adopted by them and we should see it. They'll have it at the end of 2023, I think, and we'll, we'll see it as a department early 2024 is what we expect. So we do expect that a lot of the updated requirements in the TPR division 12 will be kind of folded into that effort. And we are not proposing changes in division 44 for metro ongoing work. But consistent with the charge, the rules laid out to start with Eugene Springfield Salem Kaiser areas. To do a coordinated regional plan to meet the greenhouse gas reduction targets. And those are, the dates here are identified in, I think it's rule 15 in division 44. And in this case, a work program is typo there, my bad, not optional. We're saying that there's a date set out where we want to see your work plan. And we want to help you come up with that work plan to come up with. How are you going to do work? How are you going to work together? What elements are you working on? And then just want to point out that. The regional plan pulls up the transportation system planning work as well. So we have requirements for, give us a regional idea of how you're going to do this. And then implement that through your local transportation system plan and comp plan amendments. So those deadlines are in the rules and they can change the dates. And the commission has discretion on whether that looks good or bad. If there's some back and forth there, but they can say, you know, we'd love to do it by 2025, but here's the deal. We can't do it. 2026 is what we propose and here's how we'll do it. So that's the phasing that we've ruled out there. Then I guess which begs the question is, what about the other metropolitan areas? So we have some rules in division 44 that lay out criteria for the commission to use to require other metropolitan areas to do scenario planning. And there's also a provision for areas who wish to request scenario planning. If they feel like this is a good method, they'd like to go and do the work. Then we have an optional in there as well. And then I guess for the other ones, I'll just say that we did have some interim requirements. And that is connected to our performance measures, which we kind of talked about is set up a performance based planning system. That uses the greenhouse gas targets as an assessment to lay out. Performance targets for actions, implementing actions that would be kind of like surrogates towards achieving the target. Things like getting more mixed use in transit areas or low stress bike travel networks. And you're, and you know, how many miles are you building per year kind of thing? So I think there's the last slide on the timing and phasing, and I will pass it on to Kevin unless there's any questions overall for the timing and phasing that we want to handle.
Thanks, Cody. All right. I'm going to talk a little bit about land use and climate friendly areas. So I'll be really touching on the changes in the most recent draft of the rules. Kind of provide an overview, I think in the first slide, you can go ahead and move to the next one. Thank you. Yeah. So basically, climate friendly areas, what is that? It's an area that looks like this. It's, it's the older part of many of our downtowns. Where that were typically built before we started moving to. A system where we were building neighborhoods for single uses and we were using single vehicle trips to get around. And so you have kind of these older areas with a mixture of uses and a variety of things happening. And that is, that is the crux of what we're trying to move towards in terms of the land use requirements. So to create a built environment where more people are able to meet their daily needs with either shorter car trips or in some cases using transit bicycles, walking or other, other mobility modes to get around. Quite simply, next slide, please. So I think I maybe I've answered that first question, but I will say, so climate friendly areas was part of the. Part of the strategy that was developed as part of the straight statewide transportation strategy. So that, that plan was put together, developed and maybe adopted. I can't remember in 2013 or somewhere around there, basically a plan for how to move, make significant progress towards our climate pollution reduction goals. Land use is a significant lever to do that because obviously where things happen has a big impact on people's transportation needs. And so the modeling suggests and data suggests that when we have a mixture of uses and a more concentrated type of development, it's much easier for people to get around and to do so without a, a single vehicle. And what's more, there's a lot of people who want to live in these areas. Currently, there are a lot of folks, young professionals, retirees, people who want to live in the more vibrant portions of cities where there's a lot going on or people who want to be less dependent on vehicles. So there, there is a market for this. We've certainly seen a lot more of this kind of development in recent years. And it is a significant tool in, in our efforts to reduce climate pollution. So the, the rules in the current draft apply to cities with population over 5,000 located within those eight metropolitan planning areas. Fundamentally, they require climate friendly areas. You'll hear us use the acronym CFAs. I'll try not to do that any more than necessary. But climate friendly areas signed, sized and zoned to accommodate at least 30% of total housing needs. And I say sized and zoned very intentionally. Because there's a relationship to how cities plan for housing needs. I'll talk about that in a little bit, but, but that is basically the framework for how, how these regulations would roll out. The current draft has cities and counties required to submit a study of potential climate friendly areas by June 30 of 2023. One year later, those cities and counties would be required to adopt zoning and comprehensive plan amendments implementing those climate friendly areas. And I, I think it's important to note too, we talk a lot about housing. And we will talk a lot about housing here in the next few slides. Part of the reason for that is that we have a good system for tracking progress on housing and obtaining data on housing. But I want to stress that employment in climate friendly areas, locating services and other similar in offices and other similar uses is really important in climate friendly areas. We have not really addressed that in the rules in this package. Our, our plan is to actually develop quite a bit of guidance on the, on the EOA side for how to promote more of the kinds of employment uses that we need to see in CFAs, but without amending the rules. So we're not trying to upset the apple cart, but it is something that we, we know is, is an important component of climate friendly area. Next slide, please. So first off, I'm going to talk about the housing rule revisions. And the first piece is really important. It's a complicated issue. But the, the draft of the rules in the current set better differentiates how a local government is to plan and zone climate friendly areas based on zoning capacity. But how residential land needs over time will continue to be determined based on actual development activity in residential areas. I say this because there's a, we've gotten a lot of testimony on this issue. We've worked through this very carefully. I know you'll probably hear from realtors, from home builders, concerns about impacts to our housing markets. We believe that we've put together a scheme that allows us to move towards our goals without really having a negative impact on housing markets for other types of housing that are not in climate friendly areas. Of course, we want to see more residential and other types of development in CFAs over time. And we think we've set in place a process that will allow us to move in that direction, but not to disrupt housing markets elsewhere within, within local government jurisdiction. Um, the other change we made to the housing role is simply to add reporting on production of housing accessible to persons with disabilities to the required analysis of fair and equitable housing outcomes that's associated with the designation of climate friendly areas. So as local governments are, are studying those climate friendly areas, figuring out which ones make the most sense. And then designating those climate friendly areas, we want them to, to take a look at, are we doing a good job of meeting the needs of persons with disabilities? Housing for people with disabilities in these areas as well, as well as affordable units and overall housing units. Next slide, please. And feel free, put a hand up if you have any questions as I'm going through this stuff. Um, I see.
I had a quick question. Can you go back one slide? I just, I didn't know if he was saying. Just that the disability is part of the fair and equitable housing outcome or all of the fair and equitable housing outcome requirements?
Okay. So yes, within the. Within this portion of the rules, this is the piece that was most recently added. In response to House Bill 2003, there's a new requirement for local governments to develop housing production strategies and to report on ongoing progress in meeting all housing needs in the community. What we've done is to amend that rule to, to basically incorporate within that framework, reporting on housing production and climate friendly areas. The prior draft said, report on overall housing production, report on the development of affordable units. We, we have now added, we want specific attention paid to production of housing accessible to persons with disabilities. As part of that, does that answer your question?
Maybe. I guess. I'm not going to try to deliberate on this, so I'm trying to thread the line here. New housing is regulated with the ADA for disabilities. So I guess my question is, are we actually talking about the housing structures? Are we talking about the infrastructure around the housing structures? I'm just trying to understand how disabilities fits in.
You bet. That's a really good question. And, and yes, we're, we're, I mean, the building code does set requirements for accessible units. We know also that local governments have adopted incentive programs for accessible units. And we're hoping that we see more of that developed. Not to mention state and federal funding for housing often has requirements for accessible units. And so. You're right, we can't require more accessible units legally, that's my understanding. But what we're trying to get to is to incentivize and track our progress and the development of more accessible housing units. I see another hand up. Commissioner Sandoval?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, I had a question about the affordable housing. Is there somewhere where it states like the specific area median income that, that should be targeted? Or are there incentives to? To target like lower area median income?
Yeah, we do have definition language. I don't have it at my fingertips. I want to say 60% or below median income. But I'd have to check the, the specific language, but I believe that's where we've defined affordable.
Okay, thank you.
And Kevin, is there a follow up? I'm sorry, Commissioner Sandoval, follow up question on that? No, um, so. Perhaps this is a good place to talk a little bit about how housing production strategies might, and you know, kind of housing needs analyses and housing production strategies might integrate with this work.
You bet, you bet. So yeah, the, the nice thing is that. Is that House Bill 2003 really provides a great framework. And so the requirements currently in the rules to implement that bill require cities with population over 10,000 to do two things. To first, update their housing needs analyses or, or housing capacity analysis, I think is the more current term that's used. So to study their housing needs. Every eight years outside of the Portland metro region and every six years inside the Portland metro region. And then one year following that to develop housing production strategies, which is basically looking at that identified or those identified housing needs jurisdiction wide. And to figure out what are the, what are the tools we need? And what are the actions and policies that we can take as a local government to support the development of all of our housing needs? And generally that focus is going to be on the lower income portion of the housing spectrum because the market tends to be producing, you know, market rate housing or above market rate housing without need for government and intervention for the most part. And so within that framework, this tool will help us to, to also focus in on what is it, what does it take to get housing developed in climate friendly areas? What are some of the incentive programs that can be used by local governments? What's been effective, I can say anecdotally, having met with city of Portland staff. You know, they're, they have used inclusionary zoning pretty significantly as a pretty significant lever to increase affordable housing in their market. Understand that Portland is, is not the same market as we have elsewhere in the state. But that's why that the housing production strategy tool includes a rather substantial toolbox of different strategies that can be used to incentivize housing development. And we are very hopeful and we think there's good potential for building our capacity over time and our knowledge over time of what it takes to get housing developed in these areas. Did you have a follow up?
Thank you. And I think Commissioner LeLac has a question. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Chair MacArthur, and thanks. I, I do have a lot of questions with this. I'll just try to keep it just simple for just a couple. One is as we look at our housing needs analysis going forward. I'm just curious, as was reported in the Oregonian a couple of days ago. Oregon is one of the top five states for remote workers and Bend is number one. Which completely throws a, a new dimension into our housing. Needs going forward. So that's, that's a huge, huge change. And I'm just curious, number one, how we're going to factor that in? Of course, that's a bigger picture for all UGB and all growth planning, but, but it does directly relate to this issue. That, that's, that's one question. The next question I, I have is. And I, and maybe this is getting too far ahead of us. I really like that picture you use of McMinnville. And what I'm trying to understand as we look at determining the capacity of, of building in our climate friendly areas, I'm guessing those buildings in, in McMinnville are probably 35 feet high. Based on what you showed us, maybe, maybe 40 tops, three stories. And I'm just trying to understand, as I looked at, look at the, the, at the determining the building capacity. It talks about, we need to look at the full capacity in the climate friendly area. So I'm just curious, is if, if the height is established at 35 feet or 40 feet or whatever it is in McMinnville. Is that what we assume or do we assume really it's going to be 60 feet or 85 feet? Or I'm just curious, how do we begin in these climate friendly areas to assume what the capacity is, particularly in these areas? I completely agree like you, that you mentioned are already climate friendly areas. So those are two questions. One is just thinking about what the, the need and the demand is going forward. And the other is, is trying to determine what our, what our capacity is in the climate friendly areas. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Good question. So on the remote work side of things, I'm probably not the expert to talk about this. Actually, Lee McIlvan is our economic specialist. I'm probably not the expert to talk about this. Actually, Lee McGilvin is our economic specialist. I am thinking over time, the work that we do in terms of supporting employment growth in our communities is going to need to acknowledge and plan for more of that occurring in residential areas. But I'm hypothesizing here, but it is going to be significant. And of course, those areas are going to need to be provided with good, you know, fiber optic or whatever the latest thing is in terms of accessibility. It may reduce the need for office space. That is also a factor that we need to consider. To the second question, so first of all, with McMinnville, it's a great illustration, but I have to be crystal clear, you know, these rules will not apply to McMinnville, right? McMinnville is not in the eight metropolitan regions. And so, the rules essentially are, well, there's two paths, right? So we have a prescriptive path and we have an outcome-based path. And so, I'll speak to the simpler illustration. With the prescriptive path, you have identified building heights and identified minimum densities. And so, if one were doing a calculation of housing capacity within those areas, the rules actually include a sort of a discount factor for how much of that building envelope area do we think on average is going to wind up being residential? And the figure is basically 30%. So we look at that theoretical capacity, we recognize, one, that you know, you're not, not every new development is going to be to the absolute highest potential. And also that we're going to have mixed uses, and we're going to have probably single-use office buildings that will have no housing whatsoever. So so we have to apply some factor of, here's our estimate of how much housing capacity based on that. One additional new piece, and I'll speak to this in a little more detail later, with the draft rules is an allowance, because one of the concerns we heard from a number of local governments was that we are not currently seeing building to 85 feet, right? And even in some of the larger cities, it's just not happening. Some cities already allow those building heights and they're not seeing it happen. And so we've revised the draft rules to essentially say, okay, you've got to designate one climate-friendly area that, you know, does meet that higher standard for a larger city. But it gives the local government more flexibility in any other, designating any other climate-friendly areas within the community to designate them at a lesser standard. So you may have a lower building height, a lower minimum density. The trade-off will be they'll have to designate a larger area as climate-friendly area because we're still needing to size them to accommodate 30% of housing units. But there's more flexibility in the rule to allow local governments to adjust.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
It might be answered on the next slide. Over time, let's say density is really low, and so it's a big area, and then now, 10 years from now, they decide density is higher. Do the, does these climate-friendly areas grow and shrink over time?
So, what defines a climate-friendly area is a package of zoning and, you know, basically the regulations. It's not anticipated that they would shrink over time. I suppose if you've got a shrinking population, that could happen. But yes, to the converse, as cities grow in population, there is a mechanism that requires additional designation of climate-friendly areas in conjunction with an urban growth boundary expansion based on a residential land.
Yeah. So they could increase, they could, there's a mechanism to increase it and/or don't increase it, increase density and keep it the same or something?
Yes, exactly. So I see what you're saying. So, yeah, if you had a low-density area and you wanted to say, okay, we're going to take it up to the higher building height, then yes, that local government would then be able to re-crunch the numbers and say, no, actually, we can get this many housing units in that area, not the other amount. Okay. All right. Good questions. Next slide, please. Okay, this is kind of a minor, well, whatever, minor issue. We reorganized the effective dates in Division in Section 12 within the transportation planning rule. Essentially, and we've also changed, the prior draft had a CFA designation due within the first year, and local governments asked, what is that? Is that a land use decision? If it's a land use decision, it's appealable. Potential delays in the process. We talked about that in our work group. We talked about that with the Rulemaking Advisory Committee and ultimately decided, let's make that a required study in year one. And so, there are some stipulations about what that study of potential climate-friendly areas needs to include. And then that study would get submitted to the department. I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. But the key provision here is the study itself is not a land use decision. It's some preliminary work. And it allows the department and the public to view that work, to make comments, to, you know, help clarify some issues if there are questions over time. The second step is the zoning and comp plan amendments are due June 30, 2024. That hasn't changed. And the clarification, lastly, of how the requirements apply within the metro region, which are to basically tie into their current 2040 Growth Concept and Climate Smart Communities Program, where Metro will set requirements for local adoption of town and regional centers. And then those cities and counties will have one year following that deadline to actually adopt and zone their town or regional centers by December 31 of 2025. Next slide. Please. All right, so Section 0310 has been organized to some degree. It contains clearer locational requirements for climate-friendly areas. That section also contains minimum dimensions for climate-friendly areas, noting when circumstances where exceptions from those minimum dimensions may be warranted. This is an issue we've heard from local governments on a bit, and some feel that we shouldn't establish minimum dimensions for climate-friendly areas. We do so for a couple of reasons. One is to prevent sort of having these sort of linear corridors where you may have some, what, you know, could effectively turn out to be some, you know, inequitable results in the built environment, where you might have, you know, high density along a corridor and then low density everywhere else. So, didn't want to set up that framework, but perhaps even more importantly, what we're trying to accomplish in a climate-friendly area requires housing, jobs, services in close proximity. And even if you have a dense but skinny corridor, you're not really providing the same opportunity for a walkable, bike-friendly kind of climate-friendly area. And so that's why we have minimum dimensional standards in the rules. Lastly, is a clarification that only county areas that are provided with urban water, sanitary sewer, stormwater, and transportation services within an identified urban growth boundary are subject to CFA requirements. Just an important clarification. Next slide, please. All right, so 0315 responds in more detail to the question from Commissioner LeLac about, okay, so how do you figure out, you know, how many housing units can be provided in a climate-friendly area? Subsection 2 provides some detail for how to calculate that. There's a term, we're using average buildable residential area in a CFA to kind of figure out how that calculation is done. This section also details the information and analysis required in the CFA study that gets submitted at the end of the first year. And importantly, it provides a process for public and department review and comment on CFA studies. Again, it's not a land use decision. We're not making a decision on the study, but we have the opportunity to review and comment, as does the public. All right, next slide. Okay, in terms of the actual land use requirements, we've done a number of things. We've added flexibility in terms of housing types, adding in attached single-family as an allowed housing type, but also beyond that, allowing local governments to determine any other housing types that may be appropriate in a climate-friendly area with a caveat that, you know, these housing types would need to comply with minimum density requirements. The new draft of the rules establishes a maximum 350-foot block length standard with some redevelopment thresholds for when when a street dedication or pedestrian bicycle easement would be required with redevelopment. It also clarifies, we will not be requiring, our local governments would not need to require minimum densities for mixed-use building with, as long as the floor-area ratio of that building is 2.0 or greater. So again, you know, two floors, you know, to fully occupy a site at a two-story level would allow some residential units to be provided, but not necessarily have to meet the minimum residential density standard. We've taken the standards that apply to cities over 50,000 and over 100,000 and kind of put those together. They weren't significantly different. And lastly, was the piece that I was just explaining to Commissioner LeLac, which is the new rules allow more flexibility in terms of designating what we're calling non-primary CFAs. So a local government does need to designate one primary CFA based on the population size, but may choose to do less intensive CFAs elsewhere in the city if that's the desired path and seems more suitable for the market in that locale. Any questions there before I move on? Yes, I see. Commissioner, Vice Chair, hello.
I had to step away for a second, so I missed it. What does it mean by no minimum density, that line?
Yeah, so, yeah, one of the concerns that we had heard was that, well, and from at least one of the local governments was, we are seeing some residential development in our downtown area, but in some cases, it might be a single story that may be five or 10 units. If we establish minimum density requirements, then we're basically negating the opportunity for any new residential development in that mixed use. So it maybe, might be 80% office, 20% housing. This is basically saying, you don't have to apply minimum density requirements if you have a mixed-use building that is of a certain intensity, so 2.0 FAR or larger, more intensive.
And then my second question, probably because I missed it, is this, what's this 350-block length standard about?
That's the maximum. So essentially, what we're trying to do there is to make sure that we have adequate through connections for pedestrians and bicyclists where, you know, it's a, if you have a block length that is too large, it really.
Is there any cities, was this made with any cities in mind? Because we have really small block lengths and, or known nationally, right, or super-small block lengths. So I was curious.
I think for the most part, most local governments would meet this standard as is, but I'm going to look to other staff if they, if there are any cities that would have a larger existing de facto block standard than this. I can't inhale, it looks like Bill's talking, but I can't hear you. Okay. Yeah.
So maybe it's just, you're trying to establish some kind of best, future best practices or something?
Yeah, and it may also get at a situation where you might have an existing developed site that's huge block, and it would provide upon redevelopment an opportunity for a street dedication or a pedestrian bike easement through that site to provide better pedestrian bike circulation. All right, I'll move on. If there are no other questions, okay. Let's see, so land use requirements. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is moving beyond the climate-friendly area regulation. So this section, land use requirements, establishes land use requirements throughout cities within the metropolitan areas.
No, I'm sorry, before we go on from the climate-friendly areas, I was going to ask if commissioners have any information that they want to have available for next week's meeting, if there's some points you want us to, that you want staff to really highlight and for us to talk about and provide guidance on. So rather than do it at the end before we forget, so if you're going to move on from CFAs, I was curious about employment land and why and why not, what are the pros and cons of putting it in rule or not? Parks and open space provisions, if you could focus, I mean, talk a little bit about how that will work in CFAs and be encouraged in CFAs. This is all for next week. I've read some of the testimony about the 30%, and why 30%, sort of the pros and cons of landing on a 30% number, just that's again for next week. And then I heard questions today from our commissioners, which I think we want to do again next week in the more public setting. Well, this is a public setting, but for other stakeholders that might be interested, how to assure that affordable housing will be built in the CFAs, those sorts of things that you've already touched on today, but it'd be useful, I think, in that broader setting next week. And if commissioners have any other questions or information they'd like for next week's consideration, go for it. Commissioner LeLac, you had your hand up first.
Chair MacArthur, if I could before, could we just get your first item again? I'm not sure if Kevin was taking.
I'm so sorry, yes, I speak Miller quickly. So I was curious about the issue of employment land in CFAs, and Kevin mentioned that we don't have a specific requirement in the rule that specifies numbers or land or anything, and so I wanted to understand that better next week. Why or why, why would we not put it in rule and why aren't we putting it in rule? I mean, sort of the pros and cons of putting it in rule or not? Second one was parks and open space provisions. We encourage those. The third one was 30% figure, how do we land on that? And then the final one was kind of the whole affordable housing thing. How do we assure that the affordable housing or incent affordable housing to be constructed in those areas?
Thank you so much.
Commissioner LeLac?
Well, thank you, Chair MacArthur. You just asked several of my questions, which keeps my comment brief. What I'll do is I've received some questions just to myself that I'll share with staff and be great if you can address those in the presentation next week. So with that, I will, that's the end of my questions at this point. Thank you.
Hey, great. Commissioner Warren, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry I was late. I just want to overemphasize the need to, for staff to emphasize that you can have multiple CFAs. And we're not just recommending one, because I know just through the process, that was something that came up multiple times.
You bet, you bet. Thank you very much. This is very helpful. All right, so, so moving away from CFAs to general land use requirements, this section again applies to local governments within the eight metropolitan regions. The section has been amended to provide more local government flexibility in how neighborhoods are designed to be accessible and efficient. Prior standard kind of had some provisions about setbacks that, you know, we got a lot of concerns about. And so I think that what we're providing is kind of a more general direction in terms of standards that local governments should be adopting for neighborhood design. We've also clarified provisions for auto-related land uses. And then Section 0340 relates to land use assumptions. And it's important to just to clarify, this is land use assumptions for the purposes of transportation planning. The change done to this rule clarifies that both employment and housing assumptions need to be made based on climate-friendly area planning. And unless there are questions there, I think I'm turning the mic over to, I'm not sure, ah, looks like Evan.
Great, thank you, Commissioner and staff. Evan Manville, Land Use and Transportation Planner, he/him pronouns. I am going to talk about the parking reform and EV charging pieces. You all understand the importance of parking. Parking takes up a lot of land, particularly in the areas that we're trying to make most walkable. Everything in red here is downtown off-street parking pushes, pushing uses apart and making it less walkable. This isn't unique to Corvallis. Next slide. Parking pushes other things out that we want, particularly housing. This is an example in Eugene where they could make a quadplex pencil if they provided three parking spaces instead of four. But because code requires four parking spaces, it couldn't pencil. So, real-world trading parking for housing. Next slide. And finally, it's correlated with more driving. When we provide a lot of something for free and plentiful, people consume more of it. Depends very much on the circumstance, how much more, but we know that people own more cars and drive more when parking is plentiful and unpriced. Next slide. So you all, in your charge, told us to limit jurisdictions' abilities to mandate development of off-street parking, except in particular cases. You said, okay, we don't need to be putting our foot on the gas and requiring a bunch of car infrastructure. The three elements of the parking reform, first is implementing best practices of parking codes. We looked at the Oregon parking codes and we found some good things and said, hey, communities should be doing these. So things like encouraging shared parking, repurposing parking when it's underused, making sure large parking lots have things like tree canopy, that sort of thing. The second piece is choosing a parking reform approach, and that's kind of the biggest chunk of it, and then we'll get more into that, but kind of giving three options for communities on how to reform their parking. And the third piece is saying, hey, those communities that have the resources, the sophistication, possibly better transit, do some more on parking. So that's kind of how it's structured in my brain. Next slide. So these are the three parking reform options. I'm not going to get into the details of this, but option one is just saying, hey, let's make it simple, repeal parking mandates, and communities all over the world have done this. Norman, Oklahoma, Raleigh, Virginia, I think did it, et cetera, et cetera. So that's option one. Options two and three have a lot of common elements, and then they kind of diverge it near the bottom of this chart, pretty much saying, hey, let's figure out how to count parking. If you can provide parking, but it's on your neighbor's lot, that's fine, don't worry about it, that sort of thing. And then they say there are particular types of development that we don't need to require parking for, really small units, affordable housing, other things like that, and I'll touch on that in the next slide. The third piece is there are particular areas where most interested in parking reform, the climate friendly areas and near priority transit corridors. We think those are car, less car dependent areas and we don't need as much parking. And finally, you get down to the split between option two and three. Fair parking policies say, hey, there are these great things that are good, where people who aren't consuming parking don't pay for it, where they get rewarded for not consuming parking. So there's five policies in there, communities have to choose three if they're choosing that path. And under the reduced regulation, option three, it's just kind of adding to the types and areas, saying, okay, let's deregulate more types and and things of parking, historic districts, that sort of thing, a fairly long list. So, and 450 is kind of tucked under there, some things that if you don't, if really populate the communities over 100,000, don't choose the simple option and deregulate, you have to start pricing some of their on-street parking. So, next slide.
A question that you might answer later, was there, is there any space in that first chart for shared parking? Did I miss it? Shared parking models?
Yeah, so, sorry, I breezed breezed through that. I touched on it briefly, it's in 405. It's really telling communities to encourage shared parking. Yeah, it's not in that chart, it's on the previous. Anyway, yeah, encourage shared parking. So there's a clause in there saying, hey, communities have to adopt codes to encourage shared parking. Yeah. So improving parking management, so particularly development types and key areas, as I referenced in the previous slide. Looking at the really small units, studios and small one bedrooms generally is under 750 square feet, SROs, and then things like affordable housing, shelters, facilities for people with disabilities, childcare, just saying, we're not going to require parking there. People may may provide it, but we really need those things for our most vulnerable people, and we shouldn't be adding to the regulatory burden on them. The last thing that that chunk in 430 does is saying multifamily, we're going to cap that local, local mandates at one, one space per unit. So this is something City Salem did last night, but you know, multifamily developers can provide more parking, but cities can't mandate them, and that's kind of in line with where our middle housing parking codes went as well. Commissioner Jacobson.
You're on me.
I am so sorry, you think after two years I would like know to unmute myself. So I just wanted to make sure I understood the parking thing because you said something and it kind of slipped by pretty fast and I just want to make sure I understood it. So, but I think you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that for, you know, shelters and facilities for people with disabilities and childcare and such, there would not be additional parking required?
That, that is exactly correct.
Does that include or disclude, like, I mean, obviously if you're having a facility for people with disabilities, you would need to have disability parking, so that I'm a little confused on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, so the building code does provide, have certain requirements for people, for parking for people with disabilities. Generally, we think that the facilities that will know their own demand and their own need. There are lots of different types of facilities or residences for people with disabilities, some focused on mobility disabilities, some focused on other disabilities. It's a really diverse set, and so leaving it up to the developer to know that and their clientele is his, what these rules do.
Okay, all right, thanks for the clarification, appreciate that.
Yeah, sure, appreciate it. So the other thing that we're, we're going pretty straightforwardly at is saying, within a half mile of frequent transit, we're going to repeal parking mandates, and within three quarters of a mile of rail stops because people will walk more to higher quality transit, as well as reducing mandates in climate friendly areas. That latter provision may not mean a lot because this may be a total overlap of your priority transit, may include all your CFAs, so. But what, why we do that is because the Federal Highways Administration funded really intense analysis of parking and what drove parking demand up in King County. And they found that transit was the number one predictor of parking consumption. So it wasn't density, density, density of population, jobs was just under transit, but it was, it was transit, it wasn't occupant or number of people or anything, it was just like, hey, if there's good transit, people will consume less parking. And Seattle did a bunch of parking reform and saved much money based on that. But, so that, that's, that's what that says in the current draft, frequent transit depends on the community. It's anything four times an hour or more during peak, or if a community doesn't have it, it's their most frequent transit line. So that may just be one transit line in a community like, yeah, some of our smaller communities, but it may be more areas in more areas, in areas better served by transit. Next slide. So this is kind of ramping up the parking, as mentioned, more purpose communities are asked to do more. We're starting to use parking maximums, call for parking maximums in metro, we talked to our technical work group and they encouraged us to do more, more on parking maximums. So metro has better, better transit, and so we're just saying, do some parking maximums. EV charging, I'll get to that in a minute, but there's a retrofit requirement, kind of a conformance for more purpose communities. And then this thing about saying, hey, if you're going to keep your parking mandates, the seven communities in Oregon have more than 100,000 people, you need to manage some of your on-street parking and, yeah, you have to actually think about how much you have and manage it and provide a price signal to people that, hey, that has public value. It's not a super lot, but it's, it's a fair amount. And we've kind of talked to communities where like, you can make a best get estimate because most communities have no idea how many parking spaces they have on street. So we're like, make a good faith estimate and charge 5% of it and 10% of it. The last thing is for the three communities, Portland, Salem, Eugene, over 150,000, we have a few provisions to say, hey, really think about how your on-street parking is priced, do the Shupian thing, adjust your prices so parking is available and people aren't circling, as well as doing some studies before developing really expensive parking garages.
Evan?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you just say Shupian?
I did. I can explain, sorry. I dream of Shup. Okay, Commissioner Warren, yeah, I, I think you all are aware, Dr. Donald Shup, the godfather of parking and parking reform, wrote High Cost of Free Parking and kind of really developed parking studies as, as a major academic practice over the last three decades. So that, that's when I say Shupian, that, that's to whom I refer. And he has, he has a principle that like, okay, like deregulate parking and, and price it so some of it's available at all times and return those revenues to the local area. Commissioner Vice Chair Holov.
So the pricing of the on-street parking, why is that not a bullet under, in the over 150,000?
Um, so, so that it's, it's both. Sorry, that, that provision applies to both those over 100 and over 150, these are cumulative.
Cumulative, okay.
Sorry, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
All, all of you should say all of the above and, yeah.
So I don't know if it's just me, but it's like, I want to see this whole thing flipped visually, like the highest going down to lowest, because I read it the other way, even though the numbers were there and somebody, I don't know, you can find out if how other people see these things. So I, it was hard, it was hard for me to.
Sorry.
See it visually stacked. And then the other question, without going into deliberation, uh, how do I ask this question? New parking garages could potentially be, I'm making this up right now, could be a parking reform in the sense of not requiring a bunch of private development to do parking, but rather saying, let's have this district garage that is better utilized, for example. So when I saw this alternatives before approving new parking garage, I just didn't know if there's any thought on the shared parking idea, but like promoting new parking garages, but with the shared parking idea together, not separated.
Yeah, um, you know, when we talked to Salem and Eugene in our parking work group, they said they weren't really building them anyway. And generally, what those provisions currently say, and I need to look at them because I haven't worked a lot with them, is saying, do some pricing or time limit management of the nearby area before building a big parking garage. So it's not prohibiting them, it's just saying, let's try to use our other tools that are probably more cost efficient before getting into something that's going to be, be there for a long time and with autonomous vehicles maybe coming down the road might not fill up, so.
I've never, I've never seen the flip of that. I've never, from a developer perspective, like, we think of the flip of, which is if the city provided a garage, then, you know, you might reduce because it's shared versus each development providing their own.
Yeah, yeah, so certainly it's an ongoing challenge that garages are often under, underutilized because people visually can't see them and like, it's like, and then we price on-street parking wrong and, yeah, so happy to continue to think about that without deliberating with you, but yeah.
So I, I understand the answer to Vice Chair Holov's question. So the rules don't, draft rules as currently written, would not preclude a community from doing a shared parking situation, a parking garage, is that a correct statement?
That's correct, Chair MacArthur. Yeah, that they're in 415, if you want to look at them, 415 sub two. Yeah, it says for, for new. Yeah, kind of public parking garages, over 100 spaces, use time limits or pricing to manage it for a year, and if you haven't solved the problem, then you can build it. And also for private parking garages, do some transportation demand management strategies before developing 300 plus parking space garages.
Thank you, that's really helpful. I want to be aware of the time because we've gone through two or three topics and I want to make sure we get through this, and so Commissioner Warren.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. Do we have any stipulation for how the money is spent from the increasing parking? I know it's going to be a huge equity concern for some folks.
Yeah, that's not really our authority, unfortunately. So something for guidance that, that we would certainly make recommendations on that.
Commissioner Lelak.
Thank you. And admittedly, I haven't spent as much time on parking as I need to and will do so next week, and I just hope that I hear from people from, from the greater Bend area in particular because Bend is the largest economic and governmental hub east of the Cascades between here and Boise of 18 plus counties. And I appreciate the parking standards, Bend's over 100,000 now rapidly growing to 150,000, and everybody along the I-5 corridor likes to come over and they're not taking buses or planes for that, occasionally a plane, but people are driving and I, I, I'm not going, I, I really appreciate what Vice Chair Holov always says is, I don't go into deliberations, so I'm going to try not to, but I just think about the competitive advantage of businesses in Bend compared to Sun River or Redmond or Blackbeet Ranch or Prineville or, or anyplace else, if this is the, the largest economic engine east of the Cascades. So I, I hope to hear from people next week of perspectives and I don't know if there's any thought given to that because there are some unique qualities to, to this NPO compared to maybe some of the others. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. So certainly, the parking literature generally shows that if you have a quality product, people are reluctantly willing to pay a dollar an hour or something, you know, that, that psychological difficulty of getting over a cost, a zero cost can be difficult, but then people adjust to it, but yeah, certainly appreciate the comment.
If we're going to move off of parking, is that what we're going to do?
I, I've got a few more to flip through really quick.
Topic with the questions you might want to have answered next week, okay?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the EV charging, it's just saying, hey, new buildings of, with five or more parking spaces have to provide some capacity and conduit, and they don't actually do the wiring and the charging stations, so it kind of, but in the, the stuff that's expensive to retrofit now upon development, and then as demand goes up, you can fill it up, and it's 21st, 20% of spaces for commercial, and then half of spaces for residential mixed use, a large portion of which can be just the trickle charge overnight, level one wall plug thing, but 20% of it kind of is the level two charging, which allows a lot of management and faster charging and that retrofit requirement I mentioned. Yeah, last, let's flip through the last slides. So yeah, clarify the over timing on this. The, the rules have always said communities can't enforce these parking mandates, but it wasn't clear, it wasn't part of the timeline, so we're making clear that some of this happens pretty immediately upon adoption in this draft, the stuff near transit and those few development types that highlighted, communities adopt one of their three approaches by March 31st, and then they do parking maximums on their TSB update. So we give them a fair amount of time to think through their parking maximums, but that's kind of the three chunk, do some now, do some later, do some when, when you get around to it. Next slide. We, the current draft applies in the metro area. We debated this a fair amount, we said, hey, let's apply it to metro until metro has an alternative. So if, if metro develops an alternative and presents to the commission, they're welcome to do that. Next slide. And finally, some, some more work on parking maximums, I won't get into this because due to time. Next slide. There's some further work needed, refinement on tree canopy provisions and EV charging details. But, yeah, for time, again, I will be writing down questions that you want to hear next week.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to speed you up there, it's really an important topic, and, and, and so the slides that you had to go over quickly, I would like more information on those next week, and I'm sure you'll do that, so thank you, we'll provide sufficient time next week, I think we have like four hours for, for our session. And do commissioners have anything else they would like in the way of more information or pros and cons of an approach that was suggested that would be described next week at our commission meeting?
I just honed in on this word solar provision, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around why, why there's solar provisions in this section, or what are we talking about?
Yep, happy to. Address that next week, or, yeah, it's, it's an option for large parking lots to provide some solar because they're having an impact on climate by having a large, so it's kind of a. So it's kind of a, an amenity to, to make up for their negative externality of a large parking lot. But in, if that doesn't work, they can do trees instead.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Evan for next week? Thank you very much. I, I always appreciate your presentations, especially the part in the beginning that talks about the importance of addressing parking management as in this context. So thank you.
So thank you, Chair MacArthur, Bill Holstrom again. I will try to move through this swiftly. As you can see, I'm talking about transportation system planning. And then we, I need to leave time for Cody to talk about the regional climate pollution targets. So we've got a lot to talk about in the next half an hour and I will attempt to be swift. Again, just here looking at the new rules that are in division 12, I'm talking about some of the, some of the rules in the beginning of that piece about transportation system planning, and then also go over some of the details of the modal planning rules and what those are looking like right now. So in, in general, just so people are on the same page, and this might be, people may already know this, but cities and counties right now have to have a local transportation system plan. It's required. Existing rules have been around for over 20 years. There are new rules provide updated requirements for transportation system plans in metropolitan areas. There's still going to be TSPs in outside metropolitan areas. They're going to meet the existing rules still. They can, they can, they actually have the option to meet updated rules if they want to, but or the metropolitan rules if they want to, but, but Derek, we expect them to meet the existing rules. So I'm going to kind of step through the different sections of the, or the different rules within the division and kind of just kind of summarize them very quickly, what they do, just so everyone kind of knows where everyone thing is. I'll talk in detail about a few of them, but I'm really just want to give people kind of that, that sense of like, where does, where do things live? And we'll start with rule 100 and move up. These first sets of rules really talk about what is, what's a TSP? What does it look like? What's inside it? How do they get updated? Where, where do these plans apply? They apply within urban growth boundaries. That's what we're talking about. And there's also a little piece about funding and where is the money going to come from? Do the work that's in the transportation system plan over the life of the plan? Next set of rules has to do with equity and engagement, making sure that we have, we're hearing from a wide variety of voices and that the actions that the plan is taking, takes into account a wide variety of people. It, there's a rule that talks about how local governments are expected to engage with public, including underserved populations. There's a rule that just says, these are what underserved populations are, defines them and talks about them in detail. We have a rule that's, that asks local governments to make sure that they're centering the voices of underserved populations. And when they're making decisions under division 12, including in how they do transportation system planning. And then we have a rule that talks about equity analysis and that's used in a couple of different points along the way to really look at the effects of decisions that are being made, making sure that there, the, the effects are being understood on, on a wide variety of, of populations. The next, next couple of rules, there's kind of some random pieces here. There's a rule that talks about planning in the Portland metropolitan area in particular. Talks about metro, but also the local governments within the Portland metropolitan area and then how things are a little bit different up there. There are some existing rules that we borrowed to kind of, you know, make that work. And so, you know, some things are in there are pretty similar to how things work now. In large part, in big part, you know, the overall, a lot of these rules are, are bigger change for the other seven metropolitan areas than they are for the folks in metro, just because they've been already doing a lot of these things already. And we're, we're trying to respect that as much as possible. I think we still have a little bit of work to do to make sure that's, that's smooth. But we'll continue to do that, working with metro and the local governments within the Portland metropolitan area. We have a rule that talks about transportation options planning. People might remember, might know this as TDM or transportation demand management. That a term we're using here is transportation options. These are plans for, you know, programs that provide education or incentives for people to use other ways of getting around other than just driving. And these, these are longstanding programs. There's a lot of different ones all around the state. Cities generally themselves don't operate these, they do sometimes, but the development of this, these plans are going to require coordination with transportation options providers and transit service providers. But they, they are required, we are requiring an element in the local transportation system plan that addresses transportation options because it's so important. It's a really key part of getting meeting our goals. And then we also have a rule about inventories, kind of in general, all, all the motor rules kind of go into a little bit more detail about each of those as well. The next set of rules, we, we have something called a prioritization framework, which we use in a couple of different pieces of the rule. This is kind of says how local governments can make priorities and what criteria they use to, to make that framework. We're, we're very clear throughout that process that they need to work closely with underserved populations to make sure that the prioritization, that decisions that are being made are consistent or with those, the values of, of folks that are underserved. We have a rule that talks about how we expect the number of vehicle miles traveled to be reduced and, and the process for, for looking at that. These then roll into kind of two big pieces of our rules, which are the unconstrained project list and the financially constrained project list. And we'll talk in more detail, I think, next week about this. And we probably still have a little bit more work to do to kind of figure out the details of how these are going to work, particularly in combination with some of the regional planning that Cody's going to talk about. But the unconstrained project list is, some folks may know it as an illustrative list. It's a long list of projects that you're not going to be able to pay for within the life, all of the projects within the life of the plan. But you, you know, there's going to be more things that you're going to need to pay for. We're aiming for that unconstrained project list to have a whole long list of things, right? That of all types of different projects, that that project list needs to meet a VMT or greenhouse gas reduction target. So you can have projects that increase VMT on that list, but you have to have, make sure that's balanced and with, with projects that move the needle in, in the right direction. So I just want to see, that's, that's the direction we're going with that list. We also are requiring a financially constrained project list. A number of existing transportation system plans do that now are require, our rules do not require it. The draft rules will require a, a list that the local government expects would be able to be paid for within the life of the plan. So, and then, you know, we basically, we say, figure out how much money you've got, what you can pay for. Look at the top, you know, the unconstrained project list needs to be prioritized. Look at the top of that and see how much, bring those projects over and that's your financially constrained project list. In short, there's, there's some bits and bobs there that are a little bit, you know, we've, we've talked with local governments. We want to make sure that we're making it possible for them to do projects. But I think we, we're trying to smooth out a lot of those issues. Chair MacArthur.
Thank you, Bill. So I'm wondering, I'm trying to understand the distinction between the unconstrained and financially constrained. So when a region does its modeling to determine whether or not it is on target to meet its goals, do they include the whole list of unconstrained projects as well as financially constrained? Or just the financially constrained project list?
Chair MacArthur, the, the way we've got the draft written right now is the, the unconstrained project list is the list that they look at to see, does that meet, does that, if they did everything, would that get them to their goals? So, and if the financially constrained project list isn't on top of the unconstrained list, this is a subset of the unconstrained project list. So we expect the financially constrained project list to, to work to meet the targets as well. I think we're, we're still have a little bit of work to do to figure out exactly what the right ways is to put that. Because it, it's potentially difficult, depending on where local governments are at, to meet the targets with just projects that they can pay for in the next few years. There just may not be enough good projects that they can pay for that would move the needle enough. There, there, it's going to take a lot of other actions. It's going to take the transportation options, actions I talked about earlier. It's going to talk, take land use actions. It's going to take pricing and, and all sorts of other things that aren't even within the local government's control. So we're still figuring out how to put all those things together and to make a financially constrained project list that moves us to our goal. That, that makes sense in that local governments can really put together a, a good list there.
That's, that, thank you, Bill. That's helpful. And then the second question, and maybe you covered this and I didn't really understand, hear it. So in, is it the unconstrained project list where the climate and equity lens is placed on those projects to create those projects? Or where does the equity lens come in along with the climate, you know, greenhouse gas reduction lens?
Yeah, we, we use, I think, an equity lens kind of at every step of the process. We're expecting local governments to look at each of their modes, to look at the pedestrian system and to do a prioritization of that based on a number of factors, one of which are, you know, the factors need to be. We're asking local governments to work with underserved populations to develop the prioritization factors at each step of the way. So, you know, we're not presuming anything there and there may be, you know, different values for, for different folks in different parts of different communities. And so we're, we're laying out a whole, and the prioritization factors I talked, the priority framework I just talked about, the first thing of the slide, it kind of gets at that. It says, you know, these are all the wide variety of things that we need to, that are important to us, safety, accessibility, climate, equity, all these things. Talk with people in your community, including people who you've maybe not have historically talked with before, and get a good sense of like where, how, how do, how do those prioritization factors work out? Prioritize what your pedestrian system list looks like. Bring that up, combine those with the other lists, the other modes, and then you'll have another prioritization exercise with that full unconstrained project list. And that's what you'll end up there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So I'm going to go ahead and move on here. The remainder of the plans in this kind of series of rules, kind of, kind of catch all of some, a few things. We have refinement plans, which are some existing rules mostly that talk about how in the future, if you wanted to defer certain decisions about certain transportation facilities or areas, corridors, neighborhoods, there's, there's an opportunity where a refinement plan in the future. And so that's, that we're continuing that. We have a new rule that talks about temporary projects and we're allowing local governments to do temporary conversions to bike lanes, pedestrian facilities, transit lanes, something like that. Just take a lane and say temporarily, you can, you can do that and you don't have to have it in the plan. It's okay. So we're putting some sideboards on that, but we're making, I mean, it's really allowed now, but we're just making it very clear that in terms of as far as we're concerned, is, you know, from a transportation system planning point of view, there's no problem doing that sort of thing. We have some rules about how cities do modeling and analysis. And a lot of it is just showing your work and what are the assumptions that are going into those things, which sometimes are pretty opaque. We want to kind of raise those up and make that clear. And then another piece on transportation performance standards, which I think we've talked with the commission about before. And these are the, where, you know, kind of the LOS or the V oversee that the, you know, the, the the performance measures for a intersection, how well it performs, for example. We're saying local governments need to look beyond just that. They can continue to look at that as well. But look at other standards as well. And we're going to need to continue to do some work in the next year or so to really help local governments identify what some of those other standards look like. We're giving them a lot of flexibility in what they can use. But they're also asking us for help to figure out like what are, what are good things to do. So we're can, can continue to do that on the, the technical assistance side. So I think I'm going to move into the, the modal planning rules here. We have four different kind of modes that we, we've highlighted here and there are the 500, 600, 700, 800 series here. I'm just going to jump in. And generally these rules guide cities and counties, how they plan these systems. The existing rules do require this planning for these things. We're really going into more detail and requiring more in certain circumstances of, of local governments and when they do this planning. And our pedestrian system planning, when I say pedestrian, when we talk about pedestrian rules, we mean systems that are for people that are walking, but also people that are using mobility devices. And I don't want to, you know, I want to make sure that we're, you know, we, we try very clear, not just to say walking. We're trying to be clear and inclusive there. We, it's important to have a, a complete and connected network that provides for safe and comfortable travel. And we want to make sure that we're serving trips under a mile. And that most people that are, you know, traveling within a mile within urban area have the opportunity to, to make that trip. It's, it's the, the best way to make that trip is by walking. We are requiring the inventory of facilities in key locations, near schools, near climate friendly areas, along arterials and collectors. We want to make sure that local governments are planning for more protected facilities, either wider sidewalks, more buffering, near busier, higher speed streets. There's some changes that we've made the last couple of months on this that really disconnected it from functional classification, both in bicycle and pedestrian. And really just connected to, to like, what does that street really like? What's the quality of that street? And then also making sure that we, local governments are planning for facilities, including, you know, sidewalks, other pathways and crossings of streets in key areas, particularly as climate friendly areas, but other places under certain places with neighborhoods, concentrations of underserved populations, places like that, we're really paying attention to that. I'm just flying through this stuff. I apologize. Bicycle planning. We're talking about bicycles, but also other similar scaled vehicles, scooters, electric bicycles. There's all sorts of inventions people have now of, of smaller type of vehicles or devices that, that people use at that same kind of scale and size, speed. Again, we want a complete and connected network and we want to be able to serve most trips under three miles within urban area should be able to be served comfortably with, with one, you know, using the bicycle network. Again, we want to make sure that we're inventorying our existing facilities in key locations. It's really important, the bicycle rules really focus on a connected network of safe, low stress, direct and comfortable facilities that are accessible for all ages and abilities. And, you know, you don't have to be a superhero dressed up in Lycra in order to get on the bicycle to, to drive or to get, get around town. That's really for everybody. So that's, that's what we're trying to get across with the rules. I think that's the direction that the field is going. And we're, we're trying to, to move that direction and move, move folks that way. And of course, we're connecting key destinations. We want to make sure that we're planning, again, use the context of adjacent streets and that we're being sensitive to, you know, where you've got busier or higher speed streets that you're giving more protection to those facilities. Public transportation, we're requiring planning for local, regional and intercity public transportation. We want to make sure that the public transportation system is, is be able to serve people within urban areas and between cities as well. It's a little bit different than a lot of other parts of the world because in most places, the city is not the transit service provider. In some cases it is, but we're just treating it as though it is not, because in most places it is not. So super critical, and we worked closely with, with some transit service providers and ODOT Public Transit Division on, on this rule. That, that coordinated very closely with transit service providers in the area. But local governments do not, are, they have a role, they have a role in land use and they have a role in infrastructure in both, you know, along those corridors to make sure that transit has prioritized appropriately, that it has, there's destinations that are accessible to, to transit. And that we're, we're putting people and things and destinations near where transit makes sense. So that's, that's the idea that we're trying to get across with our rules to say, you know, are, we're not planning how, where the routes go, we're not planning the, the fares, we're not planning, you know, how, how often the buses run. That's the transit service providers job, right? Our job is to make sure that we've got a really good place for that bus to run, that, that there's going to be lots of riders for them there. And that's really, you know, going to be a great facility for transit. So that brings me into, yeah, I think I kind of covered most of this already, that, you know, connected network serving key destinations. We're calling the priority transit corridors where we really want to make sure that we're paying close attention in those particular places. And then also, you know, identifying inner city needs, streets and highways. We want to make sure that these facilities are planned in close connection with pedestrian, bicycle, public transportation, because I think the history of the last half century plus is that we've done a really good job of doing the street and highway planning with maybe not always paying attention to the other modes of travel. So we're trying to, to make sure that that's, it really is balanced, that we're really are, are paying close attention to, to both. We know to meet our goals that a lot of trips in urban areas are going to have to shift away from driving to, or be shorter trips in order to meet our goals. We know there's still a lot of trips that are going to still rely on driving. There's a lot of good reasons why people need to have to, to drive a car. There, there's, there's no doubt on that. We're not anti-car. We're not going no car. You know, we're just saying, you know, You know, we're just saying, you know, put it in its place, there's, there's a tool that's right for every kind of use. And what we've done is made the car do everything and that doesn't work great either. And there's a lot of reasons why that is, climate is one of them, but also like it's a pain to get everywhere because there's too many people driving. So, but we still need a safe, connected street network for all people that do need to drive. Again, planning for connected system, we're asking for local governments to really take a look at the allocation of their right of way, considering the context of that, that facility to make sure that's equitable. And, and when I say equitable, I don't necessarily mean like equal amount of percentage of right of way, but like that it, it makes sense for the context that, do you really need all that right of way for the car? If you really look at some of these streets, particularly in downtowns, and how much of it is for pedestrians and how much of it's for cars? It, it starts to get pretty striking pretty quickly, like maybe we could shift how things look here. In, in local streets, we want to make sure that we're, have a safe, slow and connected local street network that we're, you know, of, you know, trying to keep safety at the hype, you know, as the top of everything we do, of course, but in particularly in local streets. And then our larger level streets are collectors and arturials that were, that they're also safe and connected, but that we're, you know, in, in particular in climate friendly areas that we're prioritizing other modes in addition to allowing travel on those, on those facilities on cars. I do want to highlight rule 830 real quick because it is a new rule and you will hear about it next week. There are we comments about it almost certainly. It is a process for reviewing proposed projects that would add capacity to the, to the street network. It assumes, I mean, the, our assumption is that the need for these facilities is going to decline, that we aren't going to need as many of them because of, there's going to be less driving. So you don't need to have as many of these facilities, you can go through a review of them. The, the way it's designed is that you would review, go through this process of reviewing before you could add one of these facilities to your transportation system plan. And then you have to look at a range of alternatives in other modes, transportation options and pricing and see how well could those other ways of meeting your needs, how, how could, how could they help do this without having to build the facility? Recently, we made some changes to kind of allow kind of a wider range of smaller facilities to not have to go through this process. So it's really, we're trying to focus on larger facilities, but we expect we have a little bit more work to do there. Still, we've heard some things and I think we still want to make some tweaks there and you'll probably hear about this again next week. So I think that was very, very quick, but I'm happy to answer any questions. But I also want to make sure that we have time to talk, for Cody to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And so I'm just thinking that we should be asking questions that you would, that commissioners would like answered next week, rather than unless it's a really quick answer, we seem to short shrift Cody quite a bit and it's a really important section. So Commissioner Warren.
Yeah, just really quickly for next week, and this may be what Commissioner Sandoval was talking about also. Do we have any guidance in this section that talks about reducing gentrification with transportation projects?
Sorry, was you saying gentrification?
Yeah, there's a number of studies that show how like transportation oriented development or just like transit stations in themselves can produce unwanted gentrification in areas. Is there any guidance for that?
We will, we will have guidance on that.
Can I help out here just very real briefly here? Commissioner Warren, you know, gentrification and increase in, in, in land value is kind of almost inevitable. These public investments and public improvements is the displacement we hope to avoid. And so that anti-displacement's full kit, stream of work supports this effort. So we already have guidance and on that and we'll have, we are, you know, working to try to fund specific assistance for jurisdictions to analyze the potential for displacement in their communities associated with this work and also the climate friendly area designations that Kevin mentioned earlier.
Hopefully that's helpful.
Put a finer point on that, Kirsten, that's not just guidance, that's required in the CFA designation study.
Yep, exactly. But I think, yeah, what Bill was, thank you, buddy. But I think what Bill was getting to is that what we want, we know the technical assistance is needed in this area. It's, it's a new body of work that planners need to get better at all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandoval.
Yeah, so I had a question about the impacted communities, because I guess this is a terrifying question, then I have another question. Impacted communities relate to rural communities and coastal communities. But then the program targets areas that are in the metropolitan region. So I'm just a little confused about that. And then the second thing relates to actually, again, to the impacted communities, because there's a lot of different groups there. And I was wondering if you could do, I don't know, this would take a long time, but just figure out what the percentage of the state is that, in terms of population, what's the percentage of the state's population that would fall into the definition of impacted communities? Is Mike, Mike, well, I got you.
So I think it's a bigger, it's a really important topic and I think it's a bigger topic that probably relates to more, in addition to transportation system planning, it relates to the whole rule. So can staff highlight that and then respond next week with, so we can actually have a conversation about it? If that's acceptable to you, Commissioner? Great. And then I don't know if anyone else has their hand up. I was wondering if next week, there, when I was looking at the RAC pack at RAC 11, there were a lot of comments from folks advocating for using NACTO standards. Apparently it stands for National Association of City Transportation Officials. And I would like to hear just a little bit more about what those are and kind of how they're used. And then the pros and cons of including them in the rule versus having them as guidelines. I want to hear more about the rule 830. And I also was wondering if you have an example that you could provide of a, a project that currently might not be, have an equity lens to it or, and, and may also contribute to greenhouse gas emissions? How a project like that might be modified to respond to the rule? I'm just, just curious if, I mean, if you don't have time between now and then, that's fine. But I just want to get a sense of what we're looking for in projects in particular. Do other commissioners have other questions you want staff to kind of focus on next week? Okay, thank you. In your few minutes you have left, Cody. I'm hoping we can stay a little bit longer than the three o'clock deadline, otherwise you only have three minutes.
I will try to get you out on time since it's such a nice day here in the valley, at least I want to enjoy it too. Yeah, thanks, Cody Meyer with the department. And just quickly, just wanted to remind folks like where we started from, just kind of re-ground where we're coming from. Number two here, we're amending plans to meet the greenhouse gas reduction targets next. Just a way of thinking about how our climate program, next slide please, Bill, fits together with the overall climate strategy for the state. We have emissions in total. The STS, the statewide transportation strategy from ODOT carves off a slice of that pie for transportation. Our metropolitan greenhouse gas reduction targets carve off a thinner slice of that pie for the household light duty transportation greenhouse gas emissions. After you've accounted for fleet fuel technology, EVs, clean fuels, what's left, their VMT reduction targets, vehicle miles traveled. So it's the kind of local share and it's all connected and all is needed. So we are really connecting our local transportation system plans to this greater effort here. And so in the STS, we know the different metro areas, we have targets and we know approximately what happens to happen in those areas. Our targets don't go down to the city levels. Next slide here, I'll get a little bit on that. So basically, they are regional targets for each region. We don't have a target for the city of Corvallis and the city of Philomena. Next slide, please, Bill. So obviously, DLCD rules outside of metro, we don't have rules for the metro regions, we have them for cities and counties. They do transportation system planning. We know that there's also MPOs that do federal planning requirements for the region that typically kind of roll up the local transportation system plans for their planning requirements. So the projects that are, you know, likely to be funded from the cities are the projects that go into that regional plan. I'm going to breeze through the next couple of slides, but just quickly, next slide. We've been doing this for a decade. So Portland had, you know, a requirement to do it. We've been doing work with the regions, you know, we're not reaching different conclusions. We know that it takes a comprehensive strategy. It's not just transportation projects, it's policies, it's land use changes, it's policies like pricing of parking, TDM or transportation demand management, it's really a coordinated strategy to get there. So the next slide, I think I'll just kind of skip down next, kind of went over this earlier, next. What I wanted to like focus in on is how are we getting plans to meet the targets and what does that look like? So, you know, I think that this was from a part of the charge that we started with was to prioritize and select projects in the plans to meet the targets. We obviously know if we run the modeling and do the regional work, did that meet the target or not when you do that at a region? But we really need to think about how to connect the projects. And I heard some earlier from Chair MacArthur, you know, how are we getting to these projects? So the next slide I put together just to think about this or view it is like, how do the TPR rules connect to meeting the targets? So this is a little messy, there's reference on the left. But as Bill went over on this top circle, we have the modal elements of the transportation system plan. So you're thinking about what's my inventory of bike ped system? What does that look like? Where are my gaps and deficiencies? What's it going to take to do a full build out to catch that system up for the 21st century? So those are kind of like a project list for each modal element. Then the rules in, I believe it's like 0170 there, they say, take all those plans or this project list and, you know, stack them together. So you've got a full list of projects. So that's like your wish list, that's everything you're going to need over the 25 year planning horizon. Then we have these rules that say, okay, develop two lists, an unconstrained list and a constrained list, constrained by finances. Like what are you projecting to bring in, to pay for over the next 25 years? And so we have put the meeting the VMT or GHG reduction target on the unconstrained list. So develop a list that's like a business plan to meet the targets, what's it going to take? And there might be projects on there that you have funding for, or there might be projects that you need to get a, a bond measure to do. Or you might want to think about, you know, development comes in and pays for some of that. We don't know what development's going to come in, but we can, you know, assume that some will be paid for by developers as they build out, you know, their section of town. And then getting into the financially constrained list, the rule 180 says, well, you need to take that list and you need to prioritize it by achieving the targets for the VMT or GHG, looking at equitable distribution of benefits and burdens. And then we have these rules 900 that say, everyone has to do performance measures and set performance targets based on the level of ambition of meeting the targets. So it's a real belt, balance suspenders kind of system we've put in here to say, you know, get a list that meets the targets. And then when you pull projects off of that list, screen that by, you know, are you, is it helping you get to your goals of your performance measures and your performance targets? We know we need to get to 30% bike mode share by 2050, then this example. Then we would say, okay, well, what's the low trucks, low stress traffic network that we're going to have to build out to accommodate that? And set performance benchmarks from here to 2050 or 2040 to get there. And so picking projects off that list should be demonstrating progress towards those actions to getting to the target. So little complicated and convoluted maybe, but just a way to kind of visualize that in the rules. So I think I went over my time, apologize for.
Well, Cody, this is, if you could send that diagram out sooner rather than later, I don't, I didn't see it in the packet, maybe it's hidden in there. But I think there's an amazing diagram, it helps me a ton. So if you wouldn't mind sending it out to commissioners, I'd appreciate that. And then the, so the only, I'll, I'll open up to questions and then let's ask Cody for questions he might want to answer next week when we have a fuller timeframe to do that. So great, short presentation, but really helpful. Commissioners? I guess I'll jump in then, not seeing any hands. I, the, I'm trying to figure out, I wonder if next week you could give us some guidance on the role of, roles and responsibilities in, with MPOs versus the local jurisdictions, both in the context of that chart you just put on the board, Cody, but in the other areas as well. And then I guess those are the only two things I was, oh, I, well, because measurement is so important, I still, I still don't. It's one thing to develop these lists and put them into, you know, into play and finance them. So then I'm trying to figure out whose responsibility it is to measure the collective actions of all these things to demonstrate that the region and the jurisdictions in that region are in fact making progress toward their required outcomes. So that's a bigger topic and, and you probably would have covered it had you had more time. But if you can cover that next week, that would be helpful. There's a lot of questions in there about how to measure success and I think, I, I think I need to understand that better. Other commissioners have, this has been great, first of all, thank you. I know you guys are really, really busy and so thanks for taking the time to give us this extra timeframe to really get our heads around some of these pieces. We look forward to our four hour conversation next week with, and we'll include the public can obviously weigh in on those things as well. So other commissioners have any parting questions, comments?
Chair MacArthur, I'll just say, I can't imagine being prepared for next week without this work session, so thank you.
Great.
I think the only comment I was going to make was I thoroughly enjoy when there's graphics that are like, these are the three sections. This is flows into that, like that, my mind becomes clear when I see those things. So thank you for doing those. I think every presentation we have is getting more graphically oriented and I think that's going to be helpful for a lot of other people too, because different people consume information differently.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think the presentations are excellent. Thank you. Steph? Okay, without belaboring the end point, see you all next week. Have a great week.
Thank you.